And welcome to the February 11th, 2016, meeting of the Sterling Heights Planning Commission. I would call the meeting to order at this time. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ancona, would you call the roll, please?
I will. Mr. Jabaro.
Present.
Mr. Cole Morgan.
Present.
Mr. Cop.
Present.
Mr. Militello.
Present.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Norgrove.
Present.
Mr. Reinowski.
Present.
Here, and Mr. Rowe.
Present.
We have a full group.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Mr. Militello, supported by Mr. Cop, I believe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two case items this evening for consideration. Let me just announce that the first one is PZ 15-1138, Stellar Hospitality Hall Road LLC. This is a request for a conditional rezoning from C2 Plan Comparison Shopping District to C3 General Business District. Located on the east side of Delco Boulevard between M59 Hall Road and North York Drive in Section 2. Property address is 44500 Delco Boulevard. We received a correspondence from the petitioner and asked that this item be postponed for 60 days. So we will not be considering it this evening since the petitioner is not here. We don't know the nature of the postponement, perhaps there's some changes or whatever the case might be. So with that, what is the date of the April meeting?
I believe it's the 14th.
Fourteenth, I think.
Fourteenth?
Day before Tax Day.
Oh, that's easy to remember. Okay. I would entertain a motion to postpone.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to postpone item PZ 151138 Stellar Hospitality Hall Road LLC.
Okay, you have a motion?
Support.
Is there a support by Mr. Norgrove?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You should do that to a particular date certain, that April 14th date, so that you don't have to re-mail.
Yeah, Mr. Maker, would you?
Yes, I'll make it for the April 14th meeting.
Thank you. And Mr. Norgrove, yes?
Yes.
Any discussion on the motion to postpone?
Mr. Chairman, I'm wondering if there's anybody in the audience who came on this subject?
Perhaps they have. I would just say that since we don't have the petitioner here and we don't know the nature of the postponement, that we ought to really wait till the April meeting for any consideration or any discussion. So.
I just wanted to let anybody who'd be in the audience understand that.
Yes. Okay. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. The motion carries, and this will be postponed to the April 14th meeting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Please let everybody know in the audience that might be interested in that case that there will not be another re mailing because they're notified tonight what that date is. So it's April 14th, the same time.
April 14th.
And there will not be another re mailing.
And they could also be reminded on the city's TV channel?
Right.
Yeah, and?
And the?
Cable channel?
Websites.
And the website.
Right.
They can also feel free to?
Thank you, Mr. Andrews.
They can also feel free to contact the planning department. By all means, we can keep them updated in terms of the status of the application.
Okay, you can also contact the planning department for any further updates on that. Thank you very much. Sorry if you did come for that item, but the petitioner did ask for a postponement. Okay, the next item is PSP 15-0048-7191 Associates LLC. This is a request for recommendation to City Council of a variance to ordinance number 196, the City of Sterling Heights subdivision ordinance, to allow a cul-de-sac road over 800 feet in length and to waive interior sidewalks on the north side of 17 Mile Road between Mount Road and Van Dyke in Section 16. Property address is 7191 17 Mile Road. I will now turn it over to Mr. McLeod.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One point of clarification on the actual agenda item itself. Since the posting of the agenda, or posting of the amended agenda, I guess, it has been determined that the actual waiver of the sidewalks does not need to be considered by the planning commission. That can actually be done as an administrative function.
Okay.
So tonight's only action would be the recommendation on the actual roadway length itself.
Thank you.
Also keeping in mind that this is solely for a variance item. The actual site plan is still an administrative function as well. So moving forward, this will simply be a recommendation to City Council. City Council will make the final determination on whether the variance should be granted or not.
Mr. McLeod, do you have your microphone in front of you?
I do.
Thank you.
Try to lean in a little bit more.
There you go. Thanks.
So the application is for, as noted, for a variance for a cul-de-sac or roadway length of over 800 feet. The applicants are proposing a roadway of approximately 2,900 feet to access the property commonly known as Sunnydale Golf Course, or formerly known as Sunnydale Golf Course. This development will become an industrial subdivision ultimately to provide access to a number of industrial properties that will be developed individually as time goes on. The reason you're hearing this particular variance and not the zoning board of appeals is that the subdivision ordinance, which is ordinance 196, specifically indicates that variances from the subregs go from a planning commission recommendation to City Council. So as you can see on page 2 of our review, there's several specific factors that the planning commission needs to take into account when making the recommendation on variances. That there are such special circumstances or conditions affecting said property that the strict application of the provisions of the ordinance would clearly be impractical or unreasonable. In such cases, the subdivyers shall state their reasons and so forth. Letter B, the granting of the specific variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties in the area. C, that such variance will not violate the provisions of Public Act 288 of 1967, which is the State Subdivision Control Act, or sometimes known as the Land Division Act. D, such variance will not affect or have the effect of nullifying the interest and purpose of the ordinance in the comprehensive development plan for the city. So if that determination is made, you shall include all your findings and specific reasons for the report to the City Council itself. So as noted, this is a 2,900-foot cul-de-sac to service the 155 acres that was formerly Sunnybrook Golf Course. As of right now, there's currently seven developable sites shown on the particular site plan with two additional sites shown as dedicated stormwater retention or detention. Right now, the developable sites aren't so much of an issue. Those may change over time, since those are land divisions and will be handled administratively, but that's what's shown on the site plan at this point. The rationale provided by the applicant for the requested variance is that no viable secondary access point exists. The applicants have explored potential connections to Sims Drive to the west, as well as Enterprise Drive to the north and Van Dyke to the east. The potential connections to the north and to the east would require the roadway to traverse the Plum Brook Drain. Crossing of the drain would likely require Environmental Protection Agency review, MDQ review, as well as Macomb County Public Works Office review, and would obviously be very costly. The connection to the west across Sims Drive would require the crossing of the railroad corridor, which runs along the entire western length of the property. There's also some pretty significant grade changes there. So as the applicant, as part of their submittal, has provided a map depicting other areas in the city's industrial corridor where cul-de-sac lengths exceed that permitted by ordinance, you can see that list there. A number of particular industrial drives in close proximity to this actual site do exceed that, either equal or exceed that length of the ordinance itself. The closest one to this particular application in terms of length is Sims Drive, which is about 2,450 feet long. The fire department was contacted in regards to maintaining access for this particular cul-de-sac. In their preliminary review, the fire department did not necessarily have an issue with the additional length of the roadway. And they indicated that they would use individual business drives for turnarounds as necessary as you went further into or deeper into the site. In addition, they felt that the Boulevard entrance was seen as a positive to allow for additional emergency access from 17 Mile Road. Sunnybrook Golf Course, as you know, is one of the few substantial remaining developmental industrial properties within the city. This property has historically been zoned for industrial purposes or primarily for industrial purposes. The depth of the property at 3,900 feet could suggest that a longer cul-de-sac may be necessary to provide access to the entire property and to allow the entire property to be utilized. As part of this study, we requested that the applicants provide a traffic study. They provided a traffic assessment, which is kind of a light version, if you will, of a traffic study. They've indicated in that assessment that based on their anticipated turning movements, including industrial traffic, which includes truck traffic, that while the roadway capacities would be slightly deteriorated, there was no substantial or significant change in the traffic patterns or in terms of the overall traffic capability or capacity of the roadways. The one recommendation that did come from the traffic assessment was that the Boulevard entrance actually be extended longer or extended northward into the site to allow for a dedicated left-hand turn lane and additional stacking for that left-hand turn lane coming out of the site. And then during preliminary reviews of the site plan and discussions with the developer, with administration, concerns were raised regarding the possible need for a traffic signal at the intersection of the entrance and 17 Mile Road. The proposed entrance also aligns with one of the entrances to the Chrysler plant to the south. Across 17 Mile Road, the traffic assessment provided by the applicant does not specifically suggest the need for the study, however, or for the signal. However, operational levels will be at a low level of service during certain periods of the day. It may be appropriate to continue the exploration of installing a traffic light in this location to provide more efficient turning movements, especially for the truck traffic entering and exiting the site. So you can see our findings are fact there, as well as the ultimate recommendation. If you want any clarifications or would like that read into the record, by all means, I can do that. But that's our assessment of the application at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod. Are there any questions of Mr. McLeod at this point for the commission? There being none, we'll ask the petitioners to come forward, please. And if you give your name and address for the record.
Yes, good evening, thank you.
You could use the two microphones here, or you could use the podium, your choice.
Good evening, is that all right?
Go ahead.
My name is Danny Sampson. I'm the Chief Development Officer of Sterling Group. We're located at 333 West Fort Street in Detroit. I'm joined by Matt Robertson, who directs our construction services, and Ellie Torgo, who is the CEO of Sterling Group. We're, I mean, if you don't mind, just thank you for having us. We're very pleased to be in Sterling Heights and working with Sterling Heights. We've had a very pleasurable experience working with really everyone from the city. Chris has been a pleasure to deal with, everyone from the city manager, through the planning and development department, and city attorneys, building department. It's really been a very welcoming experience, welcoming experience, and we're pleased to be a part of it. So thank you for this opportunity.
You're welcome. Anything you would like to add to?
I think Chris really summed up the project quite well. I guess the theme here is really the hardships that we're faced with on the east to the north and to the west sides of the property. Rail, creeks, and topography make it very complicated. We were encouraged by the folks at MDQ not to pursue those avenues. They didn't say, "Don't do it," but they certainly explained that it was going to be very time-consuming, costly, and cumbersome, which, of course, as developers, we take to heart very seriously. The only other thing I would add to that is we're very fortunate. The project is seeing tremendous activity from the private sector community for folks who want to locate to the park. So we are under some real time constraints, some real urgencies in order to accommodate these various needs. So that's one of the reasons we're here and in the condition we are, to request your favorable support in order to accommodate these users and actually start construction very promptly, weather permitting. So we're fortunate in that regard. I think we all are that Sterling Heights is a place that people want to be. We're experiencing it firsthand, but as a result, we're also under the gun to perform. So with that, again, thank you for your consideration. We're hopeful to do this again and do more development with you in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll call you back if there are any questions.
Please, by all means.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Would you come to the podium, please? And if you just give your name and the spelling of your last name for us?
Hi, I'm Asima Dojcinovic. My property, Asima.
Spell your last name for us, please.
D-O-J-C-I-N-O-V-I-C.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. And my property is 7491. That is only property which for sidewalk makes some trouble because I know that for sidewalk, they need be from street a little bit far. But my old business building over there, like, I don't know what was, electrical shop or what, is too close to the street. And I don't know because I don't will restore this building. I will repair him and put in a couple of years in business. Because I asked it five years ago, when I buy a property for the rezoning to M2. I have trucking business, and I asked it for the dispatch office and parking lot for the trucks. But in planning department, they didn't give it me. They called it, I didn't apply it. Mayor from the Sterling Heights, which is a pest. He called me on the phone. He spoke at about one and a half hours with me. And he gave me advice because he told me that is three neighbors' house next to me. And Sunnybrook Motel was the most like residential, the people live there. And they say we cannot rezoning to M2. And now I have a question. How I may hold my business, this garage road, which I will repair, they will making a trouble for sidewalk if you bring decision to put on sidewalk? Because if you put, build a sidewalk to the north side across my property, my garage must be moved in, cut it off, or I need extend it or in other way long if I need removing. And second question is, may I rezoning? Because now is industrial park coming there? Then normally rezoning must be for trucking. And may I rezoning property and put on in business in couple of years for maybe next year or for the trucking company? Do I have same right like in Sterling Heights? Because normally, if I'm living area, industrial park, which the Chrysler is across the street, and he had the right to commercial trucks coming in and out or parking. My neighbor Ford had the right same. Now industrial park, the truck will be coming in and out. And I'm asking, do I have a problem to rezoning my property to M2 for trucking company?
What I would advise you, and Mr. McLeod, you could correct me if I?
I know that is only three houses there, my neighbors. But I don't know. My neighbor told me probably he may, he will sell that property and move because industrial park coming there.
My recommendation to you is that you would contact the planning office, Mr. McLeod, to answer both of those questions and to address, you know, those questions for you. Without knowing the details of it here right now, you know, I couldn't advise you any further than just consulting with Mr. McLeod to see if you, how you could proceed.
Okay, because sidewalk that or need cross to my business garage or over there to the property or not? I know that is because of the sidewalk there right now here.
I understand. But thank you for bringing?
Somebody must thinking about that. I don't, I don't feel that, you know, restore or so. I will put on in business.
I understand.
I will rebuild and I need only time. I normally should be until now, but my husband last year had diabetes and everything, time take a little bit slowly. But I will put on. We're both truckers and we have, I pay parking lot over there somewhere for the, my trucks. I cannot hold them there. I don't know why.
We certainly appreciate you coming before us. And if you would just, at your earliest convenience, see Mr. McLeod in the planning office, he'll be able to give you some direction.
Okay. I will not only have a problem with the city and, but I know sidewalk, I need to for my business too.
Understand.
There must bringing some, some playing with my business, not restore completely. That I like sidewalk and I'm happy because the industrial park is.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? And if you'd just give us? Pardon me, give us your name and?
Name's Lou Bacus.
Spell your last name, please.
Bacus, B-A-C-K-U-S.
Thank you.
I have property adjoining, the property was bought, the three houses next to Sunnybrook, to the east of it. Plus I don't know a lot in the back. My question tonight is, I'd like to know approximately where the road's going to go and what exactly they're doing with the ditch. They're putting a culvert in, but where is the exact placement of the culvert? And are they cleaning the rest of the ditch?
Okay, what we'll do, based on your question, we'll, Mr. McLeod, we could have the plan presented on the table so we could, you could see it? Everyone in the audience could see it?
Get some eyes.
Okay. If you could just place it on the, on the table, the camera will get it. Camera will pick up on it.
Everybody can see it.
If we have the, there you go. Now perhaps, Mr. McLeod or the petitioner could explain that?
What parcel is this?
Okay, could you explain it to all of us, please?
I was just pointing out where he was trying to get?
His orientation?
Yeah, his orientation. So?
Okay, understand.
The three houses that everybody, that the lady also referred to are these three houses here.
Yes.
And then I believe your property is?
Well, the car was here. That's not the issue. I own this parcel here, and it's all relatives here. It's all my relatives. So it's family. So I'm just kind of just like to find out what's going on for the family with placement of the driveway and what you guys doing with the train, excuse me.
Could you, could you explain to all of us, present, just give an overview of what you're proposing as part of the variance?
So this is currently, and Danny or Matt, if you want to jump in at any point, this is currently the entrance to the Sunnybrook Golf Course and Bowling Alley. It's important to the city that we keep it in the same place so that it's across from where the Chrysler entrance is. And then the road will extend this way. Matt, maybe you want to jump in and?
So really, this piece of the project is pretty straightforward. The intent is to construct this road for access to the property. The second part of that is being done through the county, and that is there's a section of drain which is, has been barricaded or blockheaded here where this piece is getting abandoned. And then we are working with both the county and the DEQ to clean up this section of the Moore Drain and these sections of the Plum Brook Drain.
Okay, the section all way acrossed?
That's correct, yes.
And the culvert's coming across here?
This culvert won't be in place any longer once this section of the drain gets abandoned.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. And there's a couple of retention ponds that will be maintained as part of the project as well.
Okay.
So.
Does that address your question, sir?
It does.
Okay.
Thank you much.
You're welcome. One other person hasn't spoken yet. Would you like to come before the commission to speak, or? No? Okay. No one else wishes to speak, we'll close the public hearing and bring the item back to the commission table. We have a recommendation from the planning office. Return to the second to the last page of our backup material. Unless there's any questions, we'll entertain a motion. Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cole Morgan?
Question for Mr. McLeod. You mentioned that this board is not waiving or abating the interior sidewalks. Who would if that was an abatement is granted? Who would make that determination?
Technically, that waiver would come from the planning department.
Who?
From the planning department. So that is still being debated in terms of the necessity for sidewalks interior to the industrial subdivision. The sidewalk along the exterior, along 17, will go in to connect to the system. But interior sidewalks, while traditionally waived in the city, there's a question as to whether, moving forward, whether that policy should be maintained or not. So that'll be discussed with the applicants, as well as the city administration as well. I don't, I don't plan on making that decision by myself. That'll be a city administration decision.
Okay, thank you. Just a comment on the?
Uh, just a comment on the, uh, traffic signal. Uh, evidently that's gonna happen. Question about, question is, when will it happen? Uh, I guess the eastbound eighteen, we would have a heck of a time making that turn, uh, into the site without, uh, without a light likewise. An eighteen wheeler exiting the site would have a hard time making a left, the eastbound seventeen mile road. So I think, uh, traffic signal, in my judgment, is a, is a must. That's all I'm gonna say.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I do have one, uh, one question. I was looking at the site plan, perhaps the petitioner could answer this. Uh, I was looking, how is, uh, access being provided to parcel G? I couldn't determine when I was out there if enterprise, would it be through enterprise?
It's a good question. We don't know the answer to that at this stage. Unfortunately, because of the topography, because of the drain, because of, it's, it's one of the issues we face. It's possible that that site won't be developed and, and it's unfortunately a burden that we'll have to bear. There could be a day, and we've talked about it length with the city, we all have interest in connecting from, from Enterprise Drive ultimately. I know the city would like to see that, at least it's been expressed, that we'd have a connection through there. It's certainly our desire as well. Um, we haven't had the demand for that piece yet, but when that happens, I'm sure we'll be having that conversation. I think it's in our mutual interest to connect that ultimately, but today we don't, we don't have a plan to do it.
Yeah, if you could bring the, uh, back on, uh, so we could view it, you could just point out what the parcel that we're talking about there?
Here's parcel, here's parcel G, um, that he, he's speaking of. Here's the drain, here's Enterprise Drive, um, where the DPW facility is, I'm sure you're familiar. It, it dead ends over here and ultimately it'd be great to connect it. Obviously, we face the same issues that we discussed previously. Uh, it's not to say they're insurmountable, but today we, we've opted not to face that hurdle and focus on, on where we can have success. But it, I think it's something that we would ultimately like to see happen. I just can't speak to the specifics today.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
My pleasure.
Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Colm, Mr. uh, Norgrove, sorry.
Um, I spoke with Mr. McLeod about this earlier. He didn't seem to know, um, who owns the mineral rights on this property? Is that gonna stay with the city or if you should find natural gas under there, uh, does that reside to you or is that in a different section of this property?
I don't, I don't think we have the answer to that today. There are a number of easements on the property currently. Um, Consumers Energy has some and there are perhaps a handful of limited, um, oil mineral rights that are, um, owned by individuals, but, but right now, um, I can't speak to that as, as a broad sense for the entire site.
Okay, that was just a, a question I had, 'cause I know there was, um, some issues with that a long time ago in the past, so I was just asking.
You know, everything that we've, uh, that we've been able to see through our due diligence period has, has come up pretty clean.
Okay.
The only issue really was, was building, um, getting permission to build over, um, an existing high-pressure gas main by consumers and they've granted that.
Okay, so there's no problem with...
Nope.
Any of that with consumers then?
Nope.
Okay.
Anything further? Uh, again, if there's no questions, uh, there, you have a recommendation before us?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr.?
Um, I'd like to make the recommendation.
Please do.
Um, it is recommended that the planning commission forward a recommendation to the city council to approve the request for PSP fifteen dash zero zero four eight for Seven One Nine One Associates LLC, a variance request for the cul-de-sac of twenty-nine hundred feet in length, subject to the following conditions. Number one, that the decision of the city will remain valid in force as long as the facts and information presented to the city during the meeting are found to be correct and that the conditions upon which the motion is based are forever maintained as presented to the city. The petitioner agrees to abide by and comply with all the ordinances of the City of Sterling Heights and the regulations of every lawful agency or governing authority now or hereafter in force. Number two, notice of the approval of the variance shall be delivered to the city clerk's office within sixty days after the approval date of the applicable meeting minutes for recording with the Macomb County Register of Deeds. Failure to file this notice shall serve as grounds to revoke the variance. Number three, a hold harmless agreement in favor of the City of Sterling Heights shall be delivered to the city clerk's office within sixty days after the approval date of the applicable meeting minutes of recording with the Macomb County Register of Deeds. Failure to file this agreement shall serve as grounds to revoke the variance. Number four, that the applicant shall install a traffic signal at the intersection of Sterling Enterprise Park and Seventeen Mile Road at the applicant's expense, meeting city specifications if deemed necessary by the City of Sterling Heights for reasonable traffic flow and safety. Provided that the property is divided and/or sold, each parcel created by the land division shall be responsible for its priority share of the cost of the traffic signal calculated on the basis of the ratio of the developable, developable acreage of each parcel divided by the total acreage of the entire property that it has divided, multiplied by the cost of the traffic signal. I.e., if a divided parcel contains developable property equal to twenty percent of the total acreage of the entire property, such divided parcel would be responsible for twenty percent of the cost of the traffic signal. Number five, that the roadway design at the entrance be designed in conformance with the traffic assessment provided by the applicant to allow for dedicated right and left turn lanes, Seventeen Mile Road, and an extended vehicle stacking area along the Boulevard entrance. Number six, that the site plan meet all requirements of the city zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and planning standards and be approved by the city's planning department. Number seven, that the site plans meet all requirements and standards of the city's engineering department.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
Mr. Norgrove, supported by Mr. Milatello. Any discussion on the motion? Any questions, comments?
I just have one comment about, uh, the packet and everything that we got. Um, thank you for the traffic study. Um, thank you for the plans and, uh, again, I, I think this is gonna be great for the city. Um, I, I take it you'll be coming back before us if we have to rezone any of these parcels for, for any future use, depending on what goes in in there. So I just wanna thank you for your interest in Sterling Heights and, and know that it's appreciated.
Thank you, Mr. Norgrove. Uh, I do have, uh, one question for Mr. Andrews or Mr. McLeod. In the motion, um, point number two and three, it refers to approval date of applicable meeting minutes. Does that include the planning commission minutes?
Probably not, because you're just a recommending body as it relates to this particular...
Okay. The reason why I mention that, because it says sixty days and...
Right.
You know, I don't know if we have any items for, for, for the March meeting, so it'll be sixty days.
No, I, I think it would be sixty days in the city council.
City council, okay. Just for clarification, thank you for clarifying that. Um, any other comments? If not, Mr. Secretary, if you would call the roll, please?
Mr. Norgrove?
Yes.
Mr. Milatello?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Reinowski?
Yes.
Ancona votes yes. Mr. Jabaro?
Yes.
Mr. Cole Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Cop?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Recommendation?
The motion does carry. Uh, so this recommendation will go on to the city council. I don't know if a date has been set for that or...
It'll be the March first meeting.
March first?
Correct.
Meeting, okay. Um, also just, uh, as Mr. Norgrove, uh, alluded to, perhaps it'll be coming back to us for site plan review?
There'll be pieces of the project that will come back to you. Uh, the roadway itself will be handled administratively.
I'm sorry, let's speak up then.
I'm sorry, the, the roadway itself will be handled administratively.
Yes.
There are portions of this property that most likely will be rezoned. There is one piece of actually multiple family property.
Yes.
That's within the perimeters of, or out, the perimeters of the property. That'll prob, most likely be applied for rezoning, uh, so that'll be in front of you. And then there are portions of the specific sites that do a but residential. Um, so obviously those would be coming back before you, uh, when site plans are, are brought forward. And then any uses, obviously, that are special land uses moving forward would also be coming back before the planning commission. So there'll be some pieces that come back, some pieces that, that may not. So just as the uses develop and over time, that'll be determined as, as what pieces do come back.
Thank you, Mr. McLeod, and certainly looking forward to any future meetings that we have with you, uh, to, uh, further this project.
Thank you.
You're, you're very welcome. Okay. Where are we here? Our next item is the election of planning commission officers. Uh, all of you received some ballots. If I buried it. So I will turn it over to Mr. McLeod and Mr. Andrews to, uh, conduct the election of, uh, of officers.
Nominations in writing, right?
Yep.
I think I have a question. Luke, will we not find further about sidewalk elections?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, that, as I said, the question was, would they be no, would she be notified further about the sidewalk?
Yes.
Um, in terms of any sidewalk that goes relative to this particular project, uh, will be within the confines of their own property. Um, so any sidewalk that may have to go, uh, in front of your particular property or anywhere else along seventeen, uh, that would be a separate city project or private project. So there wouldn't be any sidewalk necessarily being proposed in front of your property at this point. So they'll put in their frontage sidewalk, uh, and it'll be determined whether or not they put sidewalks internal to their own development, but for your particular property right now, um, being east of the proper, of the subject property, there won't be any sidewalk proposals at this particular point.
Okay. We need to move along. Thank you.
Have a nice day. Thanks.
You're welcome, ma'am. Okay, Mr. McLeod, Mr. Andrews?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. So in front of you, you have, uh, three, I think each one of you received three, um, ballots. Uh, obviously, we have three positions that are available. Um, I had also provided the, the commission with, uh, copy of the bylaws, uh, in terms of what our rules or procedures are. Um, so I think at first we, we do ballots for, uh, chairperson and then we go down the line. Um, and then if there are no contested, um, decisions for each position, then we can just do them by acclamation or, uh, do them by a vote, um, depending on how the chair would like to do that, so...
Mr. McLeod, just of her, uh, just so everyone knows, uh, the eligibility of the current officers, you would?
I believe that all three officers are at their term limits, correct?
I certainly am.
Yep.
I've been there two years.
Yep.
Mr. Reinowski, has it been two years for you?
Yep. I'm, I'm very limited.
Your term limited, you're...
I've been on that for a long time.
Uh, well, we'll put that in our new business, uh...
Right after the adjournment.
Okay.
You can put it in the minutes, I'm fine with it.
Oh, boy.
Okay, good. Proceed, Mr. McLeod. What do we, uh...
Oh, it's written ballots. I guess you don't have to do nominations by, let's see, it shall be nominated.
So I think at this point, um, the, the actual procedure would be start to fill out application, or fill out your ballots for office of chairperson.
And this is for nomination?
Nomination.
We need to nominate first.
S-H, I'll be nominated.
And they have to be accepted.
Okay, so then we'll do nominations first, then...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a nomination. Well, wait, excuse me, just back up. I think in the past, if I'm not mistaken, we did the nomination by paper and then, uh, and then...
No, we've always done it.
Okay. Am I, how would you like to proceed? I've ju, I just, maybe I don't recall it correctly, but...
No, that's the way I remembered you.
What's that?
Was it, was it...
Could you use the microphone, Clark?
Nominations by paper and then...
Clark, could you use a microphone, please?
Oh, sure. That we do, the, that we do nominations by paper and then we distribute ballots to vote on it by, uh, with the ballots, but...
Right, that's what I recall.
Or, or we can use the ballots as the, for, for the purpose of the nominations and then redistribute another set of them to vote on once we have who's nominated.
Right. It's supposed to be by secret ballot?
Right.
For nomination and, and election.
So we can, we could do the two-tiered system, I have more than enough ballots, so...
Oh, good.
Okay. That's the other question.
So we should proceed with the chair?
Yeah.
And, uh, fill out your nomination?
Right.
Well, the chair, eh?
For chair.
So you guys know I don't wanna be the chair.
Uh, you'll have your chance.
Feels like Chicago, we have all these ballots.
No, we don't have any dead people voting.
Speak for yourself.
Thank you. Maybe we should change the ballots.
It's right there.
Thank you.
Already in trouble.
Why don't you mark on the top of the nomination what office it is so that when we keep them for, you know...
Yes.
Well, yeah, it's on there. Probably gonna wait, let's see what happens here.
So in terms of nominations, we have Mr. Norgrove, Mr. Cole Morgan, Mr. Reinowski, Mr. Milatello.
Everyone except me. Okay.
Mr. Ancona.
Wow, we got almost everybody.
And those are our nominations.
Wow. Now you gotta find out whether any of those people accept or who, which of that group accept the nomination.
Were there six?
What? You need to know whether or not each of those people accept the nomination.
So there was, again, there was Norgrove, Cole Morgan, Reinowski, Milatello.
Go down the line, I guess.
Five.
I, I would accept it.
Yes, I would accept.
I'll pass on that.
I decline.
I decline.
So that means you got Reinowski and Norgrove.
So we have Mr. Reinowski and Mr. Norgrove?
Right.
Are we going to do all out in the hall or...
The one that comes back in wins.
I could never do that.
How are you voting now?
So now we vote for one of the two.
Yep, exactly.
You gotta check the box for chairman.
Check the box for chairman.
I put vice chair.
That's the other ballot.
These ballots are a little thick. Well, we'll see what happens, right? I'm surprised we have that many people running. Yeah, we'll see.
We fold them like they're really that sacred.
Yeah, I'm mad. The deloitte to each guy. Yeah, probably hasn't been called from up here. Yeah.
We're drafting good.
One blank.
Good guys. Paid a lot of money for them, but...
Mr. Reinowski has elected the chairperson.
Congratulations, Mr. Reinowski. I'm happy to relinquish the chair.
Well, thank you very much for your votes.
You're welcome.
Vote of confidence.
So, next...
Now we go to the vice chair, right?
Yep, so now we have nominations for vice chair.
See if I have it marked.
Oops. You're gonna have to work for that one, Chris.
If you're gonna do that, you're gonna make an airplane out of it.
You worked in a stoop.
There we go, we should made them into paper airplanes and send them over.
This is for nomination, correct?
Yep, this is for nomination, so we have... Yep, this is for nomination, so we have?
You shouldn't have that, Chris.
Okay, so for nominations for vice chair, we have Mr. Kopp, Mr. Norgrove, Mr. Ancona, and Mr. Milatello. So Milatello, Ancona, and Norgrove, and Kopp.
Who accepts and who?
I'll decline for that.
I'll decline also.
I'll accept also.
Mr. Ancona and Mr. Norgrove.
I'm not gonna throw this one.
Mr. Ancona has elected the vice chair.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I'll go to the secretary.
Yep, and now we'll have nominations for secretary?
Mr. and Mrs. Ancona's baby boy.
Yeah.
Well, that's gonna be quite a project.
How'd you have a write-in candidate, or what? All right, so nominations for secretary. Mr. Norgrove, Mr. Kopp, Mr. Milatello, and Mr. Miller. So Miller, Kopp, Milatello, and Norgrove.
I'll accept.
I'll decline.
I'll accept.
It's Milatello and Norgrove, right?
That's Milatello and Norgrove, is that where?
I think that's where we're at. I believe there's only two.
Yes, I see that.
I heard they were only supposed to close for six months.
Mr. Milatello has elected the secretary.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mr. Milatello, you gotta get yourself a job there. And I would just like to say, I certainly enjoyed, it was a privilege to be the chair the last two years, and looking forward to the new officers of the planning commission. Do I get a choice of where I can sit?
No.
Yeah, you and Mr. Reinowski switch.
You know, when I first came here, for years, I sat on the very end over there, but that's...
It's a good spot.
Say, there's a good chance he might be back there. Yep. There's a good chance he might be back there.
He might be back there, okay. Well, congratulations to the three of you. Okay. The next item is, do we have? Citizen participation, let the record show, there's no one in the audience for citizen participation. I will entertain a minutes for a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14th, 2016 regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll support it.
Hello, by Mr. Kopp. Any changes, corrections to the minutes? Mr. Cole Morgan, you have any changes? They've been that good, huh?
Mr. Chairman, I'll have to abstain, I was not here last?
Okay, you're gonna abstain, and the reason being that you were not present at the last meeting? Okay.
Likewise, Mr. Chairman, I would abstain, I was absent from that meeting.
Okay, very good. All in favor of the minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion does carry. Mr. Secretary? Yes. Your last duty.
That's not my last duty by far.
Oh, okay. Secretary.
Oh, thank you. As Mr. McLeod mentioned earlier, we do have a copy of the policy statements and bylaws. There is a copy of the training workshops for planning and zoning, a memorandum from Mr. McLeod regarding the master land use plan, community forums that are coming up. Also, the letter requesting a postponement for the Delco Boulevard case that we had postponed earlier, and the copy of the Michigan Planner. And that's what we have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Of course, my, any old business come before us?
Not at tonight's meeting, Mr. Chairman. I did just want to spend, maybe if I could, just one second on the master plan forums coming up.
Okay. We could do that now.
Or if you'd like that later, whichever. So as you can see, the two dates that have been chosen for the next two forums will be March 16th and April 20th.
Where am I reading this?
And this is the memorandum that was placed at your table tonight?
I'm sorry, yes. Thank you.
So it kind of gives a brief discussion of what each one of those forums will entail. I'll let you go ahead and read that at your leisure, but I just wanted to get those dates out there, it'll be March 16th and April 20th, so that the city will be holding a number of public notices and providing a number of public notices via social media, TV, websites, so forth, to try to get as much attendance at these meetings as possible. So if you could also reach out to all of your contacts within the community, whether they be business owners, residents, people that utilize our facilities and so forth, the community forums will be open to all. And so they will be held at the senior center, they'll be about two hours long at about seven o'clock those nights. So basically from seven to nine, essentially. So if you can make sure that your schedules are free for those nights, that'll mean if there is a conflict, we understand, but hopefully everyone will be able to come and be in attendance at those. So I just, again, wanted to get those dates out there, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them either after the meeting or in the upcoming month or so, you know, prior to that, that next forum, so.
I have a question, have you got it?
Sure.
Will the format be the same as you had last time, or are you gonna have a speaker, or what's your plans?
No, the presentation will be a little bit different. It won't necessarily be kind of such an open forum, per se. It'll be more of an interaction. You know, and the details of that are still being worked out, but it won't be as open and as informal as the first Saturday session that we had. So it'll be more of a, here is the materials, do you have any comments on the materials as they're presented? And then they'll take input and so forth, rather than kind of a meandering kind of circumstance that we had at the original forum.
Okay, if I may, quickly reading this. The presentation of the planning commission in April, is that, is that going to be in action by the planning commission, or?
So before each one of these forums, even in the March meeting as well, so both your March meeting and April meeting, the consultants will be here presenting. So you'll have firsthand knowledge of what's gonna be presented at the forum itself. And you'll be able to provide your input at your own planning commission meeting, and obviously any additional input you may have at the forum as well, but no, there will not be any necessarily formal action by the planning commission at either one of your meetings. It'll simply be planning commissioners providing your input Gotcha. on what's presented by the consultants. So there won't necessarily be any formal action, other than maybe general acceptance or non-acceptance, hopefully it won't be that way, but hopefully it'll be more of acceptance, but of what's being presented, again, with any input that you have. So formal action on any of the master plan items won't happen until we go to our public hearing and formal adoption of the document later on, so.
My other question, the Parks and Recreation Plan, is that, is there a deadline for that submittal?
Yes, and it's quickly approaching. But I believe that the city is taking the stance that the typical deadline for Parks and Rec Master Plan is March 1st, and that is if you, the city would be applying for any recreation grants. I believe the city has taken the stance that they're not applying for recreation grants this year, at least through the state. And so it sounds like the Parks and Rec Master Plan will not be submitted by that March 1st deadline. So once that plan is drafted and then fully vested, you know, it'll be in front of everyone for approvals and then sent up to the state for their approval, probably anticipation for, you know, not to speak for Parks and Rec, but be available for grant eligibility for next year.
It's been a long time since I've participated in the Recreation Plan updates. Is there more than one submittal for projects per year?
There used to be, I believe they've reduced that, though. I think it's essentially one submittal now for grants. I don't want to speak out of turn, because it's been a little while since I've been involved with one, but, but yeah, but yeah, I think they've reduced that. They used to have a, the spring submittal, then they did have a secondary submittal in the fall, but I believe that they've done away with that, how that they do the large grant, and then they also do a subset of, which is a smaller grant, that's more of an administrative grant. But I can check with Kyle in terms of that, in terms of grant eligibility.
But the city could still apply for federal grants, though?
Oh, absolutely. They, the March 1st deadline is specific for the two main state grants, or the several main state grants. Other than that, any other grant or private funding, or any sort of endowment kind of fund grants, or something of that nature, would still be, would still be fair game.
Okay, well, thank you for that update, and we're looking forward to those meetings coming in March and April. That's, we put that in our old business, is there any new business? I have one, one question, I don't want to put it in form of a request, but some time ago, the city found it necessary to curtail planning commission receiving publication of planning and zoning news, and I was wondering if you might want to, you know, ask the city administration if they might provide the subscription again? It's a very, very informative magazine, as you know, and so I think it'd be very helpful for the planning commission to have those publications, but if it's not in the budget or if it's, it can't be done, that's, you know, I, we'll understand.
Yeah, and that was the reason why that was done, I think. Because I did, actually, as part of the budget process, since we're in that now, I did inquire about that, I don't remember the exact numbers, but there was a substantial increase for the publication to go to multiple persons. We do, we still receive the document, it comes to the planning office, so if anyone does want to quote-unquote "check it out," I guess. More than glad to share it. But right now, the city's subscription is for a single copy, and they are very particular about that document not being copied
Right.
and sent to additional planning commission members, so. But yeah, if anyone would like to view it, by all means, stop by, I'll be more than glad to share it, and?
I do know that there is a, there's a one-year discount on the, whoever subscribes, whether it's an individual or group, there's a one-year discount, then after that, goes to the regular subscription cost, so. Just inquire and find out if it's possible.
I will inquire again, though.
Okay. Anything else on new business? There being none, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll support it.
Okay, Mr. Milatello, I'm not surprised. Of course, my Mr. Jabaro. Any discussion on that motion? There being none. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.